I'm going to call the bill to approve the board meetings. Uh, please silence for a second. We're meeting. I'm going to move on to the agenda.
Second. Let's just try using my phone just so we can get into it. Second.
Okay. You have motion and second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
I think you're up. Okay. The public appearance is a citizen comments of violence not necessary to the general. Obviously, that will only be occurred. I will not be acting upon this meeting but hope to be referred to the proper staff of the committee in action required. Please keep your comments in three minutes. No one here, so we'll move on to item five, approval of consent agenda.
I will move to consent agenda.
Mr. Kay, you have a second.
You have a motion and second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Both? Most carries. New business. Consideration discussion approval resolution 2020. Assigning off right representative to provide application to the financial system of the state of Wisconsin environment to improve the bond. So, what are you ready to do this? So, the state of Wisconsin requires the adoption of CADD resolution to apply for funding from the state to project subject wastewater treatment plant project. The village must adopt the resolution to be eligible for the clean water fund loan program.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2020.
Kay, you have a second.
You have second, Kay.
Yeah.
Okay, you have motion and second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Both? Most carries. Okay, item B. Uh, consideration discussion approval of chief of police employment agreement effective January 1st, 2023. Is in your packet? Oh yeah. The employment agreement is included in your packet. Lieutenant Servin has agreed to the terms to become the next deputy police for the village of New Blair. The agreement becomes effective as soon he would assume his duties on January 1st, 2023. Do you want to comment on the email from Bill? Has he even replied back to your email?
No.
Uh... Yeah, basically... I think we're okay. We have the first meeting in January.
That's what it says.
Before taking down the duty of chief, he will need to swear the oath. Obviously, regardless of the oath, he is law enforcement officer, so he continues to enforce the law. Uh, what he could not do is an inherent or criteria in the life until the oath is taken. The oath is purely local meaning that the state does not require it until they are owed. So, if you're concerned that he may have chief duties before the third, it would be our first meeting meeting in January. He can do it earlier and then he can do it on the third, which I think is pretty common. Uh, we do it at boarding, so, um, what we were thinking is maybe the Thursday, the 29th is going to close on Friday. And we will come into our office and take the oath off. And then we'll redo it at boarding on the third, so if you're familiar, Friday is the last one.
So, the 29th?
Yeah, I'll send you an email when we get closer. That's the plan. I'll call all those levels.
Can I ask you a question? Um, on page 11, it's only you can vote for justice. Right at the bottom, it says employee must obtain a certification from the state of Wisconsin to get to Wisconsin law enforcement office within six months of the date of this agreement. That doesn't apply to jobs, does it?
No, I do that. It's just a formality. I was grateful that I already had that. On the other question, I asked him. He said he was gonna talk to you like Roger was. On one of the pages, he talks about going to do the, like, Drake line and drug screening and physical again. Drake wanted me, he was gonna confirm with you, Roger, if you still want me to do this, because I've already done it once. Or I don't want me to go on schedule because the way it raises the contract, it needed to be done before the surgery. So, I just need to know if I'm scheduled to do all that and get one done.
I... Firstly, I don't think so, but, like, that's the last report. Because you, you had a recent drug test, I'm sure.
Well, I didn't like that one. Twenty-one years ago.
Oh, you haven't had any since?
No, I haven't smoked. No, I told Drake I was completely fine with it if you want.
If that's the case, maybe we should...
Okay.
Just, just...
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'll just give one schedule and just, all right, if I could, try and get sooner than later, get it out of it.
Yeah.
Did you want just a drug screen or a full physical? Do you want the full physical? Because I think that's what it was worth.
I suppose it would work.
Okay.
Now, we have all our doubts and doubts.
Yep, okay.
And I did have two more questions.
Okay.
Um, on the bottom of page 12, it says the general or chief of police will not be eligible for overtime in excess of 40 hours work week. And then, um, uh, 13, it says in the middle, there's a Monday through Thursday schedule and a Tuesday through Friday schedule unless circumstances require differently. Does that mean that, uh... Okay, I don't want to say this. The expectations are, or the opposite of that, that they will know I have time, what your schedule will be for the month? Is that how we're gonna do this, or you're always gonna be Monday through Thursday? Or you're gonna be some hours to Thursday and some Tuesdays to Friday? I don't, I don't know.
Well, Drake, he talks about that. And Drake said he'd just like it if I can, if it works out to work like maybe Tuesday to Friday, maybe July and stuff. And just like I told him, it's gonna be hard because Monday is after the weekends when people come in and people are in custody. You know, anything like, that's him doing all the paperwork, it's Monday morning, you know, Monday morning. Payrolls still moves really, so, there, you know, it's one of those weeks now, come in and that stuff needs to be done. So, Drake said just do what you can and work with him, or we'll keep him in.
Okay. So, let's say, for example, you work, uh, you know, two weeks at a time and there's a festival and you are not able to get a part-time officer then to oversee some festival. And your schedule is Monday through Thursday. Is the schedule flexible enough for you to have, let's say, you work Monday, Tuesday, you take off Wednesday so that people work Friday? Is that what we, is that a possibility or, you know?
It's a possibility, but it's also in here too, where the festivals have to be from, so then you're entitled to work in overtime. So then it could be an excess of, or you know.
Because the festival will be the overtime.
Right.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Festival is a major for your least present.
Okay, I need to... Yeah.
That part.
I just wonder, well, what, you know, it says here unless circumstances require differently, so I just made up a scenario.
I think it could be a scenario where perhaps one of your officers really needs a weekend, you know, off day or whatever weekend. So, like, this is, you know, he takes a job, he comes and says, like, switch with someone or...
Yeah, it's a possibility. I still have to get all the add in and that's a recent question I'm gonna have the first of the year too, which is depending on how this hiring process goes to.
Okay.
You know, things change. We're gonna be going down to, like, two off, you know, two offs. There's gonna be...
So, this changes here unless circumstances require differently, it's just qualifying that flexibility doesn't exist if it occurs in that way.
I think maybe what that's gonna, did take is the work schedule. Uh, I mean, the work schedule for the chief. Because what's gonna happen is if the chief hypothetically puts his 40 hours in on Thursday, he goes home at 5:00 o'clock. But then we have this Thursday night where there's a death investigation. And then there's another one on Friday or another one on Saturday. So now he comes in and he puts in maybe 16 extra hours. I think the following week, correct me if I'm wrong, there's gotta be some compensation in that because he's already put in 56 hours in this week.
Right.
And I don't think, from what I know of the process, that Lieutenant Servin isn't trying to make him down the village at all. But that's the nature of this business. I was in home last week and we had two death investigations, literally back to back. So, I kind of mentioned it to Jeff, I said, well, if you were off, you would have been in working another six, you know, six hours, eight hours, whatever that dictated. So, I think, uh, just so I understood, I was right, it's kind of like not cutting the stone Monday through Thursday, you know, 10 hours, 10 hours, 10 hours, 10 hours. Because like today is a 12-hour day for him, because he started at, actually, it's gonna be closer to 14-hour day. Because he started at 7:00. He planned on going home, but then we had a CPR call, we had another call, or the officers probably saved some gentleman's life tonight. And soon he's gonna have a 14 or 15-hour day. So, somehow that's gonna have to get called.
Yeah, I just... The language was just kind of inevitable, so I just didn't know what to... Okay, I think that's the only question I have. Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Be careful. Uh, one thing that we all have assigned a compact, so we're gonna do that after meetings.
Yep.
No sign, we'll be soft, we're on. Okay, we can try to do this long. So, was there anyone special item B?
No. No.
A little promotion.
Oh, sorry.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a question about... What you want to hear.
This is Kay, you have a second.
Okay, okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Both? Most carries. Okay, item C. Consideration discussion approval of 2023 to 2025 collective bargaining agreement, W28, attached no written or counter standing. Uh, every... Red in 2023 to 2025 collective bargaining agreement is included in the packet. Changes are denoted in red. Financial committee recommends approval. That's the contract for police department, police officers.
I didn't see any red, so if they want to want changes, we have this favor. Or if we're hiring for around, okay, so there are different...
One thing that you kind of stood fast on was the longevity issue. We didn't agree to that. So, that...
Was there any help here?
I don't know.
Yeah, who else was there? Was it just you?
No, um, Mike, uh, Mike Bell was there. I'm taking this long, I'm taking it with the finance committee, first of all.
I think there was another issue with, like, the salary schedule, um, with the yearly raise.
Yeah, yeah. Because we, oh, and they went out for, oh, and we came back in and all of them.
Some of them, some of them red, if you don't mind.
Right.
Uh, the years, this is gonna be a three-year contract for them, so that was some of them I'm seeing, some of them started 2023, 24, 25, it's a three-year. Um... A comp time, it was plus in there in red, the comp times, and now they have to pay that out at the end of the year. And then there's, on the last page, should be like the wages in the next, um, three years. And then they added a 10-year, a 10-year in there for the officers, for, if they say 10 years, or one is five years, one is 10.
And the...
Oh, they added the business. Yeah, one of the ones will leave them there because it wasn't for the officers, and they did that to the village, that was something that they added.
And in my opinion, the payout that the year was before?
What?
The payout that the year was before.
Cost.
Like, if we were over on the ship, we can either take it as big or put it in comp, our comp plan is 80 hours, and we can take off another time to do some recent events, now they have to pay that out at the end of the year.
Student car school, there was nothing that could be changed for non-student car school.
And then there was a couple corrections, just to follow the, uh, villagers' policy book on the vacation time. Wait, I have a, there, I think that was about it, it was a...
Yeah. Uh, very interesting, we probably first, we would be recounting that, you know, the red, the, um, hidden contract for the police officer. We never had that before. And we do have two officers that will be taking that soon, right?
Yeah, they'll be three months off. Yeah, we got one right now.
Oh, okay.
I don't know whether they'll be ready. Not yet.
Oh.
We're waiting.
Close, I'm trying to schedule a problem.
They don't come, they get it.
Sorry?
If it doesn't come, in the next couple days, they'll come for sure and they get it.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, the three-year contract. This is Kay, you have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Both? Most carries. Okay, item B. Consideration discussion approval resolution 2021, point on the air sunset to position a wastewater treatment plant operator. Director Cocke, he's recommending the point on the air sunset to position a wastewater treatment plant operator. Right, it reached something with respect to employee. The high resolution is proven in the packet. Chairperson, council member for the interview panel, and also recommend approval. Both?
Okay, well, thanks for the book that is, um, in the past, wastewater treatment plant operator was just an operator down there. Never came out of the plant to help in streets or anything like that. So, we're making a change, we hired somebody that has, um, some certification that ready for this. He has a college degree, um, from UWC at this point. He went for DNR, water, and everything like that. And he can use those points for his advanced operating services. Um, we'll have him sign up for the advanced course, um, which will happen next spring. That's my first offer. And he's gonna take that, plus he's also gonna take some of the corresponding classes for his advance. He did that, and I think he's very, very, very capable of doing that. Um, the thing is, see if he can come up, he can cross all. And, um, he will be out of the plant when he doesn't need helping in streets. So, it also gets us a personal experience. And all his time will be dedicated to this, now we're, of course, using them all sides. And since, uh, wastewater treatment plant is sanitary, is also utilities, he can also work in these, um, you know, taking help or something like that. He also watch the bike, so he can also be assigned us with water. Um, right now, we have Jason and Kevin, but if Kevin retires, we'll have another operator. Which he can also, in future, all my plans is, um, if Jason ever retired, we have a larger operator that can take care of the two as a main operator. Plus, the operator of wastewater treatment plant, and then I can hire a double labor, a harmonica to work in streets. Um, help field, I mean, not just with streets, but maybe anything. Um, we were gonna do that, Mike, Mike was interested in that, but, uh, Mike never... Wanted to take control, I think, so. And when Jason's still here, we still have water.
Um, you have a motion to accept the, the, the error.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's one issue in the resolution that we just have included when we did motion to approve the amendment. Uh, right now, the resolution reads compensation shall be $20 per hour. Compensation shall increase to $30 per hour, et cetera, et cetera. It should actually read compensation will be $20 per hour, compensation shall increase $2 per hour compensation. Uh, the reason for that change is by Chinese sound, this will be after the start of the year, so the $2 will be on top of this 2% increase. So, I will make that change today before Roger and I sign tomorrow, but whoever does make the motion tonight, it's represented that we approve the amendment.
So, mine actually does say compensation shall be $20 per hour compensation.
And then it shall increase $2 per hour to $30.
Whether you look at it like that, well, I know we have a thing, so we'll, 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 we'll slip out. We can, okay.
Drake said this was something that he and Aaron were in on, so Drake...
Oh, this?
Yeah, okay, so this is something Aaron should be aware of. Drake said he didn't take it.
No, no, this is, what, the way you gave the $2 more out of that's permanent one, because he, he looked at the same aspect. If we go up 2%, and it only was $3, so we would get out of the lot.
Right, right, so, obviously, if he would somehow get everything done before the first of the year, and then the increase at the beginning of December, then it would be on that.
It would be a challenge.
But that's, right, so, all right. Just more formality than anything, but actually...
I will make a motion to accept resolution 2021 and I am here. Um, if the rate of playing dollars would be $2 per hour increase per hour compensation share of advanced type operator is achieved.
Okay, I'll go with that. I'm just wanting to know. I was just watching.
Oh, sorry.
Like, I was wondering if you had that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Both? Most carries. Item B. Consideration discussion approval resolution 2022, point on the Nate Reddinger? Yeah, I'm right. To position a part-time patrol officer. Uh, do you have anything else you want to add?
Sure, thank you. Um, about two and a half years ago, uh, we had a part-time officer named Scott Alson that works full-time for the Greene County Sheriff's Department. He, uh, he left here because of his hours in the Black Rock Tech and Greene County Sheriff's Department, so he left here. So, we've had the opening for about two and a half years in our part-time roster. Uh, we have four, we planned three to mention, but during that time, we repeatedly asked, tried to recruit different people, we had a guy that was full-time, so it's part-time officer. And we haven't been able to get anyone to fill the position. Uh, recently, it was approached by a gentleman by Nate Reddinger. Uh, he was formerly of the oral police department where he was a lieutenant over there. And they recently added a new chief, and for whatever reasons, didn't work out between him and the chief. And he, uh, submitted his appointment with, and he's back out from the private public sector looking for work. He came to me and asked if we were hiring any part-time officers. I told him, we do have a part-time employee, and if you're interested, uh, we would do so. It was shortly thereafter, I contacted Peggy from the Public Safety, explaining the kind of situation we had, and how we're gonna keep up on this and kind of fast track it in the part-time. Uh, for a host of different reasons. Um, once Peggy said that she was good with it, she was gonna let Drake know to get Tony Johnson to go forward this evening. Um, in that time, both Lieutenant Servin and I initiated a backup check on Lieutenant Servin. One of them spoke to his current chief, and I spoke to his former chief of the local officers who worked with him former in our oral. Um, both of them said as a patrol person, he would be an asset to the department. Uh, the former chief said that without any doubt, he would hire and get him on board. Um, and I believe Lieutenant Servin, he talked to the current chief. The issue, the issues were some management issues or tasks that didn't completed. However, there was no honesty, integrity, any breaking legal issues, anything like that, and he didn't allow us to control. So, because of that, um, I am here this evening to get the approval to name the forward as a part-time officer. When I say that earlier, that there's a whole host of reasons why I want to do this, and try to fast track it is, because I'm not hiring a lieutenant, I'm not hiring a chief, I'm not hiring a sergeant. I'm hiring somebody to bring in their work for us, only one box an hour, to help us with us, with the calls. Um, everything that we've found so far is blowing our motivation forward. Um, and I say this trying to build a foundation for Lieutenant Servin, when he becomes chief servant, um, to get out there, trying to for people. So, when the transition takes place, I'm open to departments of full staff or shortly that are active, I'm gonna create somebody that can handle that. Um, some of the strong points, uh, over there are, he manages the department's track system. That's all our computerized system, that runs our tickets, our, any type of missful tickets, traffic tickets, he runs and operates all that. He doesn't, he's the person who does it. He did it as a patrol person, he continued to do it as lieutenant. He is a field training officer, so meaning, you know, Jeff assumes a role of chief, um, he's not gonna be training anymore, we have to find somebody to train. Um, here I have a 15-year veteran who can take police calls, handle the message, the death investigations. Uh, and that's all thing, my officers currently, but I have two officers with two years of experience. So, because of that, um, he's also an instructor for the field breath test, the standardized field sobriety testing. OWI enforcement, uh, uh, training. Uh, he's a TASER instructor. Uh, he does the ACIS, all the training entry for the officer record to the computer system. So, personally, what I'd like to see happen is we get him in there as a part-time officer. Uh, as Jeff and I continue to work on things, he can give away a condensed version of our field training program. We can get him out there, Jeff and I can both kind of shadow him while he's doing some work, filming some shifts. And at that point in time, if he's on board for a couple months from November, December, uh, if he's doing well, accelerating, um, or selling in what we expect of him. I'd like to probably move back and provide, soon the chief servant is on board with it, and possibly move him to one of our full-time, our two positions, if he's interested. He also has some applications on currently in the private sector, but was really interested in keeping his state certification as an officer, and that's why he came here for a part-time.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Any questions?
Um, I'm curious if this is different. This is different from recent hiring attempts? There was, like, some interviews that happened recently?
Yes, that was for what, what we were... For full-time. Uh, in the part-time, like I said, we may ask for your offer, this is an opportunity to present itself, and I jumped on it. And if, you know, there's, you know, bad feelings or something, where the board doesn't want to go forward with it, you're like, oh, I'm sorry, we're not gonna hire you. I do think personally that the gentleman will be an asset to the department long-term if he chose, if he chooses to stay on board.
Has that been come from the other interviews?
Yes, we did, we did one off, we did one off, one interview today of somebody currently about an employee full-time in law enforcement. And I think quite honestly, that's gonna come down to what's the village willing to pay to get that person here versus what we're willing to pay for anybody else. Uh, tomorrow and the next day, we're interviewing our other two top candidates, and both of those will require a 720-hour police package. Um, we have already reserved a seat in the Madison Police Academy for January class, anticipating having to hire one of those two or probably one of those two for that second position. That was before, uh, Nate Reddinger came on. If the village put together a package for person currently involved in law enforcement full-time, and they take it, and the man will want to leave one old name, and then we have to decide if we want to put somebody through the cabinet, roll the dice, and hopefully this is, that's what completes their three months of cabinet experience. Bring them on, change, change it for another three or four months, or do we want to move somebody from part-time to full-time position?
I just have some clarity, just simply, because I knew something would happen, how I came to this meeting tonight, kind of thinking that this was something that came from, so I was just getting clarity.
Oh, yeah, no.
Is that a percentage, or just I just want to know?
Good question, and that's, that's kind of where we're at with it.
Thank you.
And that's just sort of the way that it works, maybe.
Yeah, so... Yeah, it sounds like we need to move forward, it sounds like...
So, did he have to move, he can't?
I'm sorry, you know, that doesn't come along in opportunity.
No, and that's, and to be honest, that's my concern, is that he's gonna go to some other departments and say, I, I didn't start it, you fit the bill, I don't care, we have an old terror. Um, you know, we can work with this or that, and like I said, it was really nothing illegal or any more or anything like that, it was a performance on a big project that didn't go completely to the perfection.